We call the October eighteenth twenty twenty five meeting of the Bradley Beach Land East Board of Order. Please stand for the.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And this is the October sixteenth meeting.
Oh sixteen, oh sixteen, sorry.
You jumped ahead there.
Yeah, sorry.
That's okay. The four needed ever notices reported under the Open Public Meetings Act has been met as notices, meeting with emails on January thirty first, twenty twenty five, and published in the Asbury Park Press, The Co-Star and The CoStar. A copy has been placed on the bulletin board in the Borough Office and a copy has been filed above. Chair Cohen.
Here.
Mister Mayor.
Here.
Mister Wishbo.
Here.
Mister Hernandez is excused. Mayor, uh, is Mayor Pupitouzou?
That means I'm here, sure.
He's not here. Excuse me. I just said no.
He's out of town.
He is out of town. Okay, thank you. Miss Mahoney?
Here.
Mister Mayor?
Here.
Councilman Newlki?
Here.
Miss Saracene?
Here.
Mister Karp is excused this evening, Mister Warrenette is excused this evening, um, Ms. Lady?
Here.
And Mister Fredrick.
Here.
And also present is Emery Mizudo, our Board Attorney, Sam Mabakian is here on behalf of Gerald Frieda, our Board Engineer, and Jake Burton is here on behalf of Christine Bell, our Board.
Okay, welcome and thank you for attending the October sixteenth meeting of the Land East Board of the Borough of Bradley Beach. Uh, the Board will reserve a ten P M. time limit. There will be no new applications or testimony started after ten P M. without the polling of the whole Board. If an application is not completed during the meeting, a continuation date will be announced by the Board Attorney. We like to maintain a civil environment for this public hearing. Request no calling out from the audience. Everyone will be given the opportunity to be heard. After the Board and its professional staff have completed asking questions of witnesses, uh, the meeting will be open to the public for questions only of that witness. Uh, there will, this will be the time for questions only and not for comments. If you have a question, please raise your hand. I will acknowledge you to come to the podium. Before asking your question, please state your name and address, also spell your last name, and direct your questions to the witness. Uh, a person from the public is represented by an attorney. He or she must speak through that attorney. All attorneys should register their representation with the Board at the start of this hearing. After the Board and its professionals have finished questioning the applicant and before the Board takes action on the application, I'll open the meeting to public comments. This will be a time to speak on the application. The same procedure I previously described for questions is followed, and all members of the public who wish to make a comment will have to be sworn in, uh, by the Board Attorney. Please be aware that the applicant and attorney have the right to cross-examine any members of the public who may make comments. Written statements or letters from individuals who are not present, uh, petitions or speaking on anyone's behalf are not allowable under N J S A forty four and fifty-five D dash ten D. Written statements from the public cannot be accepted as they cannot be cross-examined. Public participation in this meeting will assist the Board in making decisions. We hope that this public hearing and your attendance will be a rewarding experience for all, and thank you for participating in the process.
First order of business is the approval and adoption of the meeting minutes from the regular meeting of September eighteenth, twenty twenty five.
Thank you. Sir.
Uh, Miss Mahoney?
Yes.
Mister Wishbo?
Yes.
Councilman Newlki?
Yes.
Mister Mayor?
Yes.
Miss Saracene?
Yes.
Um, Ms. Lady?
Yes.
Mister Fredrick?
Yes.
Mister Mayor?
Yes.
And Chair Cohen?
Yes.
Uh, there are no resolutions to be memorialized. Uh, we have our first application and only application this evening, L U B twenty-five slash R six, both variances proposed in addition to a single-family dwelling, Russell Curts, block fifty-seven, lot four, six fifteen, Fifth Avenue. Applicants proposing in addition to the existing dwelling to extend the two-story, three-story single-family dwelling approximately eight hundred and twenty-five square feet. Um, additional improvements included a rear patio, side yard, paper walkway, uh, associated store more travel improvements. The applicant is represented by Jeffrey Beekman of the Law Firm.
Good evening, Mister Cohen. How are you all? Jeffrey Beekman of the Beekman Law Firm, I represent. The applicant, I actually have the pleasure of having a application here. These variances, that's what we're asking for, but we're not asking for variances for building coverage or impervious coverage on this property. Um, the variances in general are related to existing conditions of the property, uh, namely, uh, there is a single-story portion of this dwelling that has a sideyard setback condition that violates your five-foot setback, and applicants proposing to go directly up at that point. Uh, in addition to that, there is, um, a roof line that is thirty-six point two five feet, existing hip roof, that applicant is proposing to extend. The last variance we are proposing this evening is, uh, what I guess would be considered a balcony under your ordinance, but it sits way back, uh, from the rear, uh, of the dwelling, uh, on the upper half-story. So I have two witnesses this evening. I have Donald Passman, who is our architect, and I have our client, uh, who was here this evening to answer any questions as well.
Sure, you can square them in. That would be great.
Could you both both in this one handstand?
Sure.
So can you both stand up, raise your right hand? Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, that nothing but the truth will help you by?
That's good.
Thank you. Can you identify yourself for the record?
Uh, Passman, Passman, our architect, licensed, I think he's in here.
Thank you. I'll have him, when we put a lot, I'll have him for this.
Okay, I was waiting. Yeah, yeah, sorry.
Sorry.
Um, and we do have a couple exhibits that we are going to enter. I, these were submitted to your Board Secretary earlier in the week. Uh, Mister Passman realized, uh, as we were preparing for testimony, that his half-story calculations were off, so he wanted to correct that and make sure that we're compliant with the half-story calculation. Uh, so the first exhibit we are going to, um, identify is revised sheets A three, A four, and A five, uh, and they will revise after ten thirteen, twenty twenty five, and as noted on the screen, uh, it's number eight on the, uh, on the screen.
And just for the record, A one and A two in that set have not been changed at all.
That is correct.
So A three, four, and five of the original architectural plans have been revised as of ten thirteen, twenty twenty five. A one and A two maintain the original filing date of, uh, nine, ten, twenty twenty five.
That's correct. And then, uh, what we would identify and mark as A two, and I'll have the doctor attest about what the changes are. These are identified as sheets, they're identified as sheets A R one, uh, one of three, two of three, three of three. Um, and again, these are associated with the revisions to the half-story calculation that we just wanted to correct, so I guess we mark that as A two.
So, I'm sorry, I wasn't paying attention. These As are too much.
Yeah.
So I don't think we should mark them, A one and A two. Refer to them as what they're labeled as. A R, uh, so A, I'm sorry, just for the record, A three, A four, and A five are from the original set, original plans, but are revised through ten thirteen, twenty twenty five. This next set is, is three new plans. They're labeled A R one of three, A R two of three, and A R three of three, and their date is October thirteenth of twenty twenty five. So that should be a small set of plans that we have. Do all, all the board members have it?
They were emailed. I don't know if we have.
They were emailed and they were posted on the website. We did not have the hard copies of those because they came too late. What, what are we labeling these as if we're not doing A one, A two? Just their names?
Just, just exactly what the plans say on your sheets. Do, do you agree with that? Is there a turn?
I mean, it's, it's a little, uh, unorthodox, but.
It's a little burdensome because of the way that it's laid to begin with. But yes, if you have those all handed in, or.
That's the, that's the second.
This is the A R one, two, three?
No, this is the one, um, that's the, yeah, A R one, two, three, yes.
And this is the October thirteenth.
That's to be, to be, uh, board members.
I, so I only have seven of the A R one, two, three.
That's fine.
Um, but, yeah, yeah, there are, there are on the three, they're.
Yeah, you will. Yeah, you will.
And these go to Mrs. Saracene and Mister Newlki?
Yeah. So, um, you ready?
Yes, sir.
Um, Don, you are a licensed architect in the state of New Jersey?
I am.
And your licenses are current?
Yes.
And if you could just provide the board a little background of your licensure?
Uh, originally licensed in the state of Maryland, nineteen eighty-two, two, three, licensed in New Jersey in nineteen eighty-seven. Had my own practice for ten years or so, and then I had this partnership with something out of the area since nineteen ninety.
And you've been accepted as an expert in, as an architect for?
In this board and others.
That's accepted, thank you.
Thank you, thank you. So, Don, why don't we start with the revised plans?
Let me, let me go through that. Apologize for the lettering, numbering. It stemmed from the fact that I reexamined the, this half-story definition, and it's very difficult to calculate, so I had to put the paper and pencil back to it, of this half-story. Again, this is a two-story plus a half-story that's existing, and that half-story, the definition has, uh, where it's five feet or greater must be, uh, no more than fifty percent of the second story. So, just to miscalculate, it's hard to calculate that with the slopes. Thought I had it the first time, and I guess I missed. So, swing and a miss, anyway. It wasn't much of a change. The difference is, the existing half-story is over this twenty-eight by twenty-four foot box, if you will. It's got some dormers on it. I want to see if a little bit bigger, gets a little bit bigger, calculations are off. So now it's about one foot ten shorter than the addition was on the original set of plans. So I thought, well, I'd better do it the right way, bring it forth as slightly smaller so that all the numbers were accurate. So, it's not much different than the original set. Anybody looking at it would never know the difference, you know, because it's one foot ten, which is that big in scale. So, and the elevations, minor changes, didn't affect anything other, what we talked, we're talking about here in terms of height, it's still a height variance because we're adding on at that height. But anyway, just as a clarification, that revision, if you've all gotten with the weird letters, is just one foot ten different than the one that was originally presented. You would hardly know. But I don't want to, I don't want to present something that's not accurate, so that's why I revised it.
Excuse me one second. Members of the public, can you hear the witness? Okay. Project.
This one.
Yeah, project.
Hey.
She'll tell you if she's not there to report it. But they said they can hear you, so you're doing.
Anyway, if I can put that to bed, I can talk about what the project is, even if that might have changed, it's still one of the same project. Okay, here's a house, two and a half stories, had a one-story projection in the back. Had a one-story projection, had a good, had kitchen, had bathroom, those are on, these are on my sheets, and two of my sheets. Did not go to the bottom. That shows the existing plans and so forth. You can see it has a small kitchen, bathroom, and this bad addition of that. The design of this project is expand the living space behind the original living room, dining room, for a master bedroom suite, a family room, and a revised kitchen. Now, the master bedroom is out the back, it's got its own bathroom and walk-in closet. Full of that, you have like a great room space, you have a new kitchen, a new family room, and someplace even higher. And that's the footprint of what we're at, which is about eight hundred and seventy-five square feet, and that's leaving the other footprint piece around, it's a wraparound condition, totally eight hundred and seventy-five square feet.
On the first floor?
On the first floor, which is where the majority of the investigation.
Jake, I'm sorry to interrupt, but could you just open number eight and go to sheet two, just so that we all know, everybody knows what we're talking about?
Just go to sheet two. There we go.
So, the second from the left is the first floor plan. There's a bunch of dash lines that I measured and surveyed the house. Those were B B ceiling, so it's really very nice. But behind that B B ceiling is this place where there's a kitchen, there's a bathroom, there's a little entry there, there's a built-in door, left of that piece of the original square of the house. To the left in the front, there's a porch, or the front is a porch, and behind that probably was a wraparound porch before it was being closed. So that's the flavor of what the first floor is. Second floor has four bedrooms, very small, one bathroom. Now, half-story up above, portion of the back is really a bedroom. The other ones are sort of acting as closets, but they, it may have been bedrooms way back down. There's a little bathroom stuffed in that right front. That's, that's what we just, there is a basement, it's about six and a half feet tall, not too tall. So now, a client comes to me, I want to have my master on the first floor, I don't want to go up and down the stairs anymore, and change those bedrooms up there on the second floor. And on third floor, half-story, let me bump it out a little bit, want a little more space, and replicate dormer where the stairway is, replicate that just behind, and that's sort of the extension. And then if you go to the next page, scroll, that should be the proposed plans, which are describing, and the dark shaded wall, will also sort of expand like the new walls. So, on the left is the basement, yes, underneath the addition is a bigger basement, let me step down, if the, um, water table allows, but now you got about seven and a half, seven foot nine ceiling. Above that, you have this new master suite, family room, great room, bedroom, kitchen, and a new stairway, that's wider than the old room, stairway. So now if you come in off the driveway, walk the stairs, where you stay at, you're at that level, and you have a living bedroom in the front. Second floor, you've got these other bedrooms, have been combined and refurbished and so forth, four really nice sized bedrooms, two closets, and you have three bathrooms, you can notice how they got better. And then you go to the half-story, which from this plan, it shrunk a little bit, but same idea. There's the second door from behind the stairway, there's this space which is now sort of a family room, there's still a room that could be a bedroom, I don't know, it's kind of like a user's bedroom, but I gotta label what it is. And then the balcony out the back, which is a little controversial because it's not permitted, you have the lawyers. Um, that's the flavor what it is. The other next two sheets are elevations, what it doesn't look like. So from the front, she won't run up and down, it won't run down. From the east side, that dark shaded area is a bad PDF, but that has a dormer on it, maybe it's easier on hardtop to sit in. Uh, it's another dormer similar to the one in front of that dark spot, and like you got a little more of a print. Uh, and that's the extended, uh, half-story. Now, the common extended half-story is, this existing roof is that much above the thirty-five foot height limit, and this is based on the grades taken from the, uh, so better. So it's not like on one spot. It's like it changes a little bit, but it's basically one foot three or one foot two above the thirty-five line. Yeah, with the way the roof is now, it's hip roof, dormers, you, it's very difficult to add on to that and not maintain that same height. Again, it's a hip roof, so it's not much of a ridge line because it tips in on all sides. So, I didn't, and I thought, well, I'm here for variance for other occasions, it's, architecture is difficult and aesthetically unpleasing to try to drop that down one foot three. It just, of course, I'll give that a different slope, and it would just be a mess. So, here to get that thing in. I did calculate, on the upper left of that same drawing, is a calculation of how much of this roof is above thirty-five feet, and it's this little crosshair piece, that's it. The dormer comes up to a point, chopped off like, you know, one foot, it's a little area that's like not much. You would never know from the street that it's not thirty-five feet. I know the, you know, it's not soaring above, and it's also sloping, so it doesn't feel like a flat thirty-five feet, or thirty-six feet.
What's the variance, thirty-five feet permitted, and what'd you say, thirty-six?
Thirty-six point two five.
If you all could check that, or at least revise the discrepancy, your survey says it's thirty-five.
That wasn't it. That's not the survey. That's the out pitch.
Your application says thirty-five point two five, your survey says it's thirty-five point nine, and you say thirty-six point two five. You testified to it, which is fine.
Yeah.
You can revise all the plans.
Yeah, yeah.
And the only reason why, I mean, I'm painstakingly looking at the grades or other thing, I don't know where the survey is from, from these survey points, I went up, and I did all that, and some of it, one, one size one foot three, one size one, because the ground changes, so. The worst case scenario is one foot three.
I think the comment was more so just for clarification.
Yes, exactly. Whereas one twenty-four, that's, you know, I think it's very minimal.
And, and Don, for the record, though, whatever the ridge height is right now, you're keeping that same, same ridge height?
Same.
Correct. You're, it's not going to be any higher than, than.
And the grade isn't any higher either, we're not changing the grade here. So, more intense approach than I look.
And, and the fact that you're proposing that, uh, dormer to the rear east side? Right. Um, that's going to be tucked in behind the, the existing dormer in the front.
Well, it's gonna, it's gonna match up with it. Again, the better drawing is the one from the A R series.
Oh, that was on there.
That's the number two or three of east side. But you can bring those up, I'm not sure what that, but they're matching dormers, ones over stairway, which have both fourth area on the roof.
Should be a lack of, of, of.
Where the, the tab at the very top, yep. Okay. And it should be the three sheets?
There you go.
No, number seven, number seven.
Oh, seven.
Number seven? There we go. There's that second dormer. And let me see if it lines up in plan view, the next sheet would show the elevations. Uh, that's the west side. Yeah, that's the west side. That one does not have a second dormer, it just means it is the same roof one. There's a dormer on the back which mimics the dormer that was on the back.
On the east elevation, the next sheet?
The next sheet, you scroll to the next one. There's a better version of it. It's shaded, so you can see what's new and what's not new.
Which is?
The shaded one to the left, not new. You see how it's up to there?
Orientation left on the right side here is the front.
Correct.
Right. And that's the, that shade.
Yeah, and with the shading, maybe throws it off, but it's all the same material, you know, of course, proof shing is all going to be the same, yeah. Just that it's supposed to give you a visual, how much of that is standing up?
And, and it almost appears by this, uh, facade that you have a gable roof going from the front to the back, but that's not accurate.
That's not accurate, because those are dormers front and back, set back from that angled hip roof, or hip, on the roof. Also, a lot along this elevation, this east elevation, which was on the driveway side, from the front to back of the first floor, those four windows are the existing sunroom, then you have the existing two belt-on windows which are part of the dining space, and the ones to that, it's kind of plentiful, that's where the stairway is, and there's the entry door from the side, still a front door. Uh, and then the other window is the laundry room, the bathroom, and there's a back. And then, and you can see that there's one story piece in the back, that's the man who that was seen. New features right, and at that point on the second floor, you see a new addition, a door on the back. Yeah. So, this is existing, so there's a one-story piece here, this is now two stories, this is one story. And this is the roof over this new, it's here, and then this is that balcony that's tucked in behind the wood here. It's tucked underneath, so it doesn't look so obvious. And then this is the new dormer, this is the new dormer, that's existing. And then some of these are, these are new windows, we put a new window here, just to give it more balance, and maybe it looks more like this. That's really, that's the impact of what you're going to see. No impact from the front, looks exactly the same.
And from this side, it's set, because it's the driveway side, it's set pretty far back from the property.
For the racks, so if you have more to drive up, get back on Main Street, you'll see this elevation. I think it's.
Um, and, and let's go back to, um, the, the last set of plans we have. Uh, we've been, I think, it's, uh, so the original. Yeah, all right, so, so I just want to run through the board so they understand the variance that were requested for the setback, the sideboard setback, if we can.
Sure. This entire line of the house, oh, foundation, first floor, second floor, is two-point-something feet.
Is there anywhere we can get that? We can't, but I can't see the pointy.
So, so what Don's pointing to is the, the west side of the house?
The west side, the west wall, is about two feet and change from the property line that exists. The, this piece too, which is one story. The, the addition, not here, but over here, and then it jogs back to five feet. So, this line stays the same on both this floor and your left one, the second floor now maintains the same line, because structurally, it's very difficult to set this back, and then you have a very skinny elevation for a floor plan, so if you go to the next page here, you can see that that line is being maintained here, that's over the one-story piece. Then once we get past that, okay, now we'll violate the setback. Boom, cuts back, and goes back to this point here.
And Mister Passman, just to articulate, so there was another discrepancy, I believe, on the plot plan, you have four point nine, I think three point nine.
I talked to him about that, and I shoved this back four inches to make that work.
So, again, if you could just change.
He changed, I thought he changed it, but maybe you don't have it.
Yeah, four point eight nine is what he said.
And I saw that, well, he measured actually to the side, so, went back, looked at the foundation.
Understood, just to check.
I shoved this back.
Just to clarify.
Yeah, that's fine. But the intent was, I'm going to jog it back after this existing space of, you know, wall, so that it does meet, is that, I don't want to violate the setback. Here, it is violated because it becomes a second floor over that. Now, there's mostly roof on the upper level, so it doesn't really, doesn't really count as a hand, because it's a roof line covering that.
So the half-story, you were not even close to that, you were five foot, where the, where the walls are?
Correct.
Correct.
What is the permitted, and what is the variance for the sideboard setback to the balcony?
Two point zero nine?
I'm sorry, I'm asking this after.
Oh, to the balcony? Or to the?
We're talking about the balcony, you're not changing the ground level, correct?
It's more than five feet.
The balcony, but. I want to, I want to, I want to make sure, I know what you're asking, so I give you the correct answer, but I believe what you're asking is, when we build this balcony, which is, you know, a piece of it, you're probably, it's probably, uh, ten feet from the property line, you'll have to check that.
If you know how large your attic closet is, it would be five feet plus your attic closet gap. If you don't show that, that would be. So you have, so if you go up to your wall, it would be five feet, your attic closet, you have the distance, so five feet plus your attic closet would give you the setback to your closet.
That's right. So it's an additional, this is five feet, it's an additional about five and a half feet. Now, the balcony edge is a big ten and a half feet from the property.
So it is not exacerbating the existing non-conforming portion?
Correct.
So the ground level is a, is a pre-existing condition at what footage?
Two point oh nine.
Two point oh nine on the ground level.
Right.
And then the balcony, I thought the balcony was exacerbated, you're telling me, no, it's, it's.
It's sick, break in.
Okay.
Any of those blocks.
So the, the variance for the balcony is merely that it exists at the top of it. It's not the sideboard setback. Okay, thank you.
There's a.
There's a second floor going on also in that area.
Right.
Which is gonna be less than a point nine.
That's, that's the variance request.
Oh.
Yeah, just a small.
Imagine, imagine the first floors.
Just roll that up just a little bit. Just so we, yeah, okay. So, and we're, just a little more so we can see the bottom. Yeah, so, so you see where it says second floor plan proposed? That third, third floor left?
Yes, yes, this is revised A three.
So you'll see right at the top of the screen, there's a job. That section, right now, a part of that is only one story.
Plus roof.
Plus roof. So that section on the second floor requires a variance because it's going straight up from there. But when it, where a job's, it conforms all of the new construction that's proposed to the rear from that job. It's fully conforming as part of your sideboard setback.
Okay. So what is the number that the second story needs as a variance?
Two point oh nine feet.
Is what it exists at?
It's what it's saying is what it is.
Two point oh nine and there is nothing there right now, so.
Correct.
So it's really existing condition, that's the exacerbation.
Correct.
Okay, thank you very much.
The half story is fully compliant with setback.
Okay.
Mr. Passman, um, in terms of the impact of this two point nine feet, is it, is it twelve feet, six and a half inches, um, north to south? That's now gonna go up two stories? And that's, that's the negative impact?
Yes.
Can you say that again, Mr. Chair?
Um, well, I mean, I'm just going by, you know, what's here on, on the three, you know, second floor plan. Twelve feet, six and a half inches, um, is, is the distance, uh, I, I wanna say, uh, from north to south, that will go up, the additional story, that's the increase in impact. That's that way of thinking. That is correct.
I'm gonna add just a note. Building code, if you're less than five feet, or less than three feet from the property line, you cannot have windows on that wall as a fire rate wall. As far as upon the neighborhood, no windows that close. Which I think is part of the five foot setback, which is my plan. Because most towns have a five foot setback at minimum, so you have windows on. If you're the neighbor and someone's two feet away, you don't want that, without the windows that close to you. So this one does not have any windows. Add twelve and a half feet.
Uh, and I wanted to ask you about where you inform at the five feet in the addition. Um, is that a fireplace jog out that's less than two feet that we're seeing?
Yes.
And that's permitted? Yeah, two feet projected.
Yes.
Okay. And now my other question is, on this side, now that we're gonna be up, are, are the fly rafters gonna be on the property line or how far do you think they're gonna come out?
They go, I, I don't think they're like eighteen inches or something, plus the gutter. So I don't think it would go over the property line.
Okay. Should, okay.
Again, remember the, the two point oh nine, I don't know if the surveyor surveyed the siding or the foundation. There's sometimes two and a half inches. That's, that's a lot, in other words, still the same answer. But just so you know, that two feet. That wrap over.
Listening about the neighborhood.
Yeah, yeah, it shouldn't be, we'll make sure it isn't.
Mr. Chair, just to clarify, you're collecting all of your roof leaders that are going to a drywall on the back. So you shouldn't have any adverse effect when the eaves are occupied in the property.
There won't be any spout.
Right.
And that's gonna be a new addition to the property.
Correct, yes, that's correct, yeah.
Great, thank you. And then, um, I did have one more, I'll turn it over to some colleagues. When you do the addition on the second floor, that gives you the opportunity, because it's gonna change your fifty percent number above, because you've added the floor below, it's now like, so you've got to build a bigger, um, half story addition, which is fine. Um, I do appreciate the, um, the exhibits showing the impact of the thirty to thirty-six, uh, feet floor inches. Um, that was very helpful. And so really, we're talking on that hatched area on the top that you reflected, that's, that's basically just sixteen inches that is above. What is the roof pitch coming out to? Yeah, eight four is very helpful.
Um, it's probably, I think it's a ten or twelve.
Ten or twelve?
Yeah. Actually, it's more a twelve floor.
Twelve floor.
So that hatched area and that roof plan, so you took a saw, a saw at thirty-five feet. That's what would come off.
That's, yeah, that reflects exactly where you're, you're doing it, uh, top floor through border thing.
Yes.
Will you just address the balcony part of that?
He's not gonna testify about the balcony, eh?
No, I can't. The physicality is out of the.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, I think this discussion needs to be having, you know, if this goes forward, testimony.
Yeah, my, my client, uh, will provide the testimony on that, but obviously, Don can testify, it's an architectural detail.
It's about.
But it's about, it's a seventy square foot balcony, ten by seventeen feet.
On the second floor, overlook the back.
Well, not really, but.
It's in the back.
Yeah, it is in the back. Yeah.
Any other board members have a question for Mr. Passman?
Yeah, so, I understand the hip roof and I understand the, um, desire to keep that. But just looking at that, really what it impacts is your dormers mostly, right? Because you could just drop that roof a foot, four inches, whatever. And you can build that hip roof and maintain your main gables. All that's really impacting is your dormers. So all you're really doing, so you could actually meet the code. And all you're gonna do is you're sacrificing some room, interior room dimension, because your dormers have to get smaller. So, so I understand you made the testimony that it was messy with the roof lines and the problematic, no, no. My suggestion would be that to reframe that, it's the dormers would become smaller. And then it would reduce your floor space on the interior. But you could maintain your spokes of your roof lines and your, and your hip roof without, um, jeopardizing any architectural or structural, um, what you're doing is you're gonna have to reduce your dormer sizes.
Right, so, correct, it can be done that way. The most important impact of that is maintaining the ridge line so that it looks like it belongs. And also matching the two dormers. If that's a jeopardy, they'll jeopardy, and that doesn't look right. I mean, I've done plenty of additions where you would do something like that, but this, it's not that big. And if I, if I had the existing dormer and the new dormer was smaller, that close, just aesthetically, I think it would be unpleasant. And I'm thinking, okay, what are the trade offs? Let me, let me go through this. Why would I ask for this variance? Well, it's pure aesthetics. You can do all these type of things to it, but then it looks like you did that addition. Why is that dormer right next to the other one and smaller? Now, this, my client wants the other dormer, I get it. You know, he's my, he's where I do all this work. But I'm trying to make it look nice. Because on this board, you know, after this, you get to build it and it's all done three years from now. And I'm, I'm looking at that, I'm like, that, that's why I did it, because it matches. Not that it looks like a smaller version of the other one. In this case, okay, there's other cases where you can do a smaller one. But not in this case, it's just too, they're too close. So that's why I did it. You, you can vote against it, I understand, but that's why it's done.
So you can make both dormers the same size? Is that what you're saying?
Well, one's existing and one's new, and you want them to match.
So, right, so you'd have to remove.
I have to change it, you know, I have to, that's over the stairwell, it has schedule issues. I mean, yes, you know, we can do anything. We're trained to do anything. But we wanna do something that's aesthetically pleasing for the neighborhood, for the house. The interior space isn't, wasn't the important piece of it. It was the aesthetics of having, getting a little bigger for more space and general size and to have a matching. Now, that's it.
And changing the existing, what's the issue?
Well, I'm just dropping it down, yes.
Yeah, it's more, it's not, it's more offensive.
Yeah.
But it is the intent, I mean, I can understand you, the intent is to make it look like it was all built like this originally.
That's it, that's my job.
So it didn't want to chop down?
Mr. Passman, when you did the calculations for the fifty percent on the two and a half story, did you do the thirty-three percent at seven feet?
I did.
Because it stole that?
Yes. It's tight.
Tight?
So it was a Venn diagram of those two calculations. But having that steep roof. And there's certain things you can do and getting a seven foot height in those closets help. Because we can, in these closets, you can make them seven feet or six foot eleven.
So for the resolution, what are you gentlemen talking about?
Well, this is about the building code. Because if this building were considered a third story by the building code, you would have expensive ramifications, my client. Things you have to do to make it a three story building versus a two story with what they call a capital ladder.
They what ladder?
Capital ladder. It's a capital ladder, living space with access with a stairway, but only at the seven foot and higher mark. The area of that capital ladder should only be, uh, thirty-three percent of the floor.
Not a variance issue, not a, not a, it's only a order issue, it's a building construction issue. Normally do we have to comply with the ordinance for the half story, but we ought to have, also have to comply with the construction code.
Yeah, just making sure for the homeowner that we say, okay, we give you a variance for what you have. And then he comes to and says, oh, you can't build that, so.
We had a long conversation about that the other day, Mr. Wishman, you did.
Table seven, right, if I write it wrong. He helps me. Mr. Wishman.
I have a further question, so, hey, one else has a question, Mr. Passman, is here?
Mr. Chair, just, just a couple. Uh, one's the minute, and are you gonna testify about the drywall or somebody else?
I designed the drywall, I can testify to it.
Does someone here testify to it?
No, we're not gonna testify to that, but obviously.
So your drywall is miscalculated, there's discrepancies that are two different types of drywall that you're showing.
Yeah, so, so we will provide plans to satisfy you as, as far as any.
Excuse me, I'll articulate my concern. One of the drywells is shown as six hundred, one is shown as nine hundred, and there are two different types of drywall. Like, do you, do you have a little book?
Nine hundred, six hundred what?
My gallons. And I'll explain it.
Sure, that'd be great.
Let us sit up here, you shouldn't.
Okay. Look, don't end this.
Don't quit on the agenda, sixteen.
The top one.
Yep.
There you go.
And you want the top one.
You get that.
Alright, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna get nerdy. I'm gonna get nerdy. These are, these are all a little bit. So these are two different types of drywall, right? This is a Marshon unit, it's a prefabricated unit, concrete box. The idea is that water comes in, you have two outlets, that you develop like a manhole structure, a little orbit. That's nice, on the bottom, a little hole in it and it'll sub to percolate. What this is, is this is like an old school DMP from like, you know, nineties, which is fine. And inside, I don't know if I can see, inside all of this is mostly stone wrapped, which you don't show. And the idea of these perforated pipes, that you could open up that cap, look inside to see what, where elevation is. I would recommend to the board that they would have the applicant go with this Marshon tank, which is nine hundred compared to the six hundred that they provided here, just because you have more storage capacity and it'll just be, I honestly, it's probably just two details that they threw up. Uh, but if you liked it, I could articulate a little bit more, but.
Well, well, we'll stipulate your resolution and we will make a change.
Yes.
Well, I, I'm not, I don't think I can stipulate to that, because here's, here's the thing. We are not asking for a purpose coverage variance. In my opinion, this issue's not under the purview of the board. We can make it as a resolution compliance to provide a plan. That would be satisfactory to your engineer, but this is beyond the scope of the board for this application.
But you are coming, you are coming here for relief and this is.
But we're not asking for a relief on a purpose coverage.
Or building code. This could be a concession, if you will, that you showed.
Well.
We prefer this one.
Well, you're, you're, you're right on the limits, really, you, you don't need a variance for this.
We don't.
You are right on the limits, but, I mean, we, we could consider a positive benefit to your overall application.
And, and the positive benefit is we are providing a drywall. I don't think we're required to even provide a drywall with this application, but we will provide that. But without having the ability to talk to the engineer about this, normally I'd have an engineer here if I had a purpose coverage variance. But we don't on this application, so.
So who designed these two different?
Land, landmark engineering.
Landmark engineering, but they're, they're not here.
Okay.
Um, how would you like to handle it?
I, if I, I'm a board member.
No, we can have your direction.
The, the Marshon tank that you showed, that's actually another detail below it, I believe is most likely what they're going for, because then you have a nine hundred gallon. I would, I would prefer to see for a drywall system, it'll help any adverse effect that you may rely. The larger system, and again, this is getting a little nerdy. This system doesn't have the stone voids inside, it hasn't surrounded. So what that does is the stone now allows for more water to be inside that tank. Um, as a best manner of practice, it's better to have that Marshon tank of out the voids in it. Um, this is, uh, not even exaggerating from two thousand and four, the best manner of practice.
Okay, so let me just question you again.
Sure.
Um, so I get this right. And I agree with what the attorney is suggesting, the attorney is suggesting, which is a condition that you be, uh, you review and reasonably require what you want. But here, we're telling you, the board wants this, and so I'm gonna write it into the resolution as a condition of compliance, subject to reasonable approval by our tar board engineer. And the, the idea would be, I think, two, of, two drywells that are both the same.
So it's just, I just wanna clarify, it is only, they're only proposing one drywall, they just show.
Two details.
They show, this is one detail, this is your Marshon tank.
Okay.
Uh, this is a different type of drywall.
Okay.
And just so you see, six hundred, nine hundred, the Marshon tank, this tank would be a greater impact on any adverse effects of drainage compared to this thing.
Okay, what is that, six hundred gallon?
So this is, so, okay, I'll get, I'll get, I'll get.
I wanna know what we're putting in, I don't care what you're putting.
So this, this one is a nine hundred prefabricated Marshon tank, is what they're calling it. That says it.
Okay. Only one, not two different?
I like talking about engineering, that's what you gotta be.
No, that's fine, I'm just, you know. Okay, Mr. Chair, does that satisfy the board generally?
That satisfies me, and any of the board members have any issue with it?
An issue, just, just, but I think it tends to. I understand, uh, Deacon's point, this is an part of the application. And if the, the force, you're talking about putting it in memorialization of the application. Force that issue, whether or not it's required or not.
And that's my point, I mean.
I, I, I'm, I'm not trying to go with your side, it's fair about this.
I'll just, um, I'll continue to try and articulate my side, right? We thought of how far out the eaves go. So the eaves are within twelve inches, let's just say, of the property line. What this is showing, what they're proposing is a reason why I think it is more favorable, we'll have an application if they propose this. The reason being is because now all of your roof leaders, all those gutters are collecting. And not potentially overspillings onto your neighbor's property from that. That's why I would recommend.
In, in addition, there's a substantial addition to the roof systems.
Yes.
Which increases the runoff.
Yes.
And if, if I'm, am I mistaken?
Hundred percent.
The runoff pre-construction should be the same post-construction. So this would be a way for them to accomplish.
That's correct, yes.
And, and.
And again, we would have to accomplish those things anyway. But my, my point is to force us to choose one system over another, if both of them work, is in my opinion, beyond the scope of this board.
Okay, I mean, why were two submitted, was that?
That I don't know, I mean, I'm not an engineer.
If these were submitted by your.
Yeah, it, it was part of our, uh, I guess this, the.
This is a block plan.
Block plan.
And I will point out that the same company, Landmark, who did this block plan, also did the two surveys that we had in, in there. And our engineer has already pointed out several deficiencies in those plans as well. This is probably a deficiency in the plan, showing two different things and not picking or choosing what you want. So again, I'm going to use the word reasonable with our board engineer. He's going to reasonably require what is appropriate, knowing you don't. Knowing you don't need an impervious coverage, knowing you don't need a building coverage, but drywells work wonders for the neighborhood, so, you know.
Well, and again, that's, there's no reason proposing or requesting the drywall.
Yeah.
And, and it's the type of system that, you know, me sitting right here, my client sitting right here, an architect sitting right here, we don't know the difference in cost, we don't know the difference in impact. And, but at the end of the day, I agree with Mr. Cohen. We've got to keep it at least, no, no worse off than what's existing with this proposal. I have no problem with that. I have no problem with that being in the resolution. What I do have a problem with is mandating a certain system, if we can accommodate it with, with a system that satisfies our obligation.
All right, we might have to get out when I write the resolution.
I don't know what's going on.
Because that's enough.
Is there currently a drywall or no?
There's a.
No.
So what you're saying is there's plans to put a drywall in, period, which is already an improvement.
Correct.
Right.
Correct.
So I agree that the fact that that's the intention of the plan should be acknowledged as, you know, an improvement to the property, whether it's a six hundred or a nine hundred. It's an improvement. So rather than, you know, overreaching, I think it's probably a good idea to acknowledge that for what it is and not get into some of the.
No more standard stormwater calculations, which, which really would tell us to Sarah's point, whether it is six hundred or nine hundred.
Well, and look, again, at the end of the day, that's not my decision, that's not the architect's decision, that's not the board's decision. That's Mr. Buckingham's office.
Okay. And we will do it at Mr. Buckingham's office.
And one more very deminous, I think, I just wanted to point out. If you go to the half-story, I'm sorry, Jacob. I just wanted to point out, so this bathroom right here, if you have a five-foot stairs, you only have about one-fifth of the usability of that bathtub or shower. So if your balls like, my, for anybody bigger than five feet, that's almost not usable. That's not my purview. I just wanted to throw it out there just as a, just a.
For the record, that's an existing bathroom, just so you know.
Oh, that's up with.
Yeah.
I took a bath in this one.
Good.
For the record, that was beyond an identified.
The people who stand up.
Yeah.
He didn't stand up.
Yeah. I guess a very diminished is just on the.
Mr. Beadman, in four years?
I think if there are no other questions, Mr. Passman, you'll have to come up.
Sure, that'd be great. At this point in time, we'd like to open it up to the public. Any questions for Mr. Passman, questions only. Please step up, just give your name and address, and we'll be happy to have you question Mr. Passman. Seeing no hands, I'll close the public portion for questions. And Mr. Beadman?
Thank you. Well, I'll call my client up.
Okay, for the record, this gentleman has been sworn earlier tonight, your full name and your address, sir.
My full name, Russell Kurtz. Six fifteen foot bathroom.
You are the applicant.
I am the applicant.
Thank you.
And Russell, you're also the owner of the property.
I'm the owner of the property.
Is there any way we can pull up the tax map, by any chance?
I believe, um, it might be on the, the borough's website somewhere.
It's on the county site?
Yeah, you have a keyboard?
The keyboard is right in front of you, and you can also.
Do you want me to do that?
Yeah, because I can't get over it.
And it's sheet twelve. Sheet twelve? Sheet twelve, yeah. And it's one fifty-seven.
Uh, sheet twelve. What? Sheet four.
Fifty-seven? It's fifty-seven. Why is mine sheet twelve? I pulled it up yesterday. Maybe sheet seven? Try to see sheet seven.
Why does that say eleven? I can see it from here, Joe.
I see, you know, I see seven.
Your bottom corner has a seven.
Oh, it's eleven, sorry. That's all around it.
And I'm blocking this again.
Yeah, there it is.
So for the record, would we call up his?
So for the record, this is, this is the borough's tax map, sheet eleven, which is, which is this block. We are a lot four in block fifty-seven, so we're that lot that Mr. Buckingham is pointing to. And, and as everyone knows, to orient you, east side, where you see Fifth Avenue, is Fifth Avenue straight up to the beach. And north side of the property, Fifth Avenue, is where that jog is going around the school and, and the church. So, Russell, you're asking the board to grant a variance for a balcony on this property.
Yes.
Can you just explain some of the reasons why you're asking in this particular location for this particular project?
Yeah, the, the point of the balcony is to give us an opportunity to have a view of the ocean. Right now, from the third floor, what we see is the corner of the, the school. And by having a point of view that's a little bit further back, we can see down the straight part of Fifth Avenue to the beach and get a little bit of the benefit of the ocean view, a little bit of perhaps the breeze off the ocean and just kind of a nice omni-monstern, I don't know what else to say, for, for enjoying the house. Something my wife and I always talked about. So, so that's, that's the main point.
And, and you're understanding, obviously, that you, you're asking for a variance for this condition, correct?
Yes, I understand it's not permitted by the current rules of law.
You understand that balconies are permitted under the ordinance on those half-stores, correct?
Uh, yes, but only at the front.
But, but only in the front.
Well, just give me a better view of the school. I'm not saying anything about the school, but my kids do.
And probably the church tower as well, I would think. So from the standpoint of this property, and the master ordinance with the encouragement of utilizing views of the ocean in those kinds of things, that's your, your rationale as to why for this property you're proposing this?
Yes.
In addition, the location of the balcony, when it comes to the overall structure, if you could just provide an explanation to the board.
Well, it's, it seems like the appropriate, the, the reasonable place to put it would be just a, you know, small door, you know, a door out the back and a small platform to be able to get that advantage that, you know, that I talked about. A chance to, you know, enjoy the, the view, maybe down to the ocean, maybe a breeze and just be, I mean, we're not trying to help a party do after anything like that. It's just a, a small thing that, you know, we've talked about for years, but haven't really gotten around to until now.
Alternatively, I suppose with this application, you could propose a little bit larger second story and enclose this area with glass windows, those kinds of things, correct?
Uh, I suppose so, yes. It would be a little more money.
It would give you those views, but inside versus outside?
Uh, yeah, I mean, I hate to say it this way, it's just not what we intend. This is what we've talked about.
And when you said that you talked about this with the, how long would you say you talked about this with the?
Well, I mean, we bought the house, well, she bought the house in eighty-six, and.
Eighty-seven?
Yeah, I mean, I mean, she, she passed away, she took the house in twenty-one, so we don't talk about it anymore. But nothing, except emotionally. But that's, I mean, you know, we were, we were both working. She worked up until she got sick and, you know, and then it was, then it was during COVID, so there wasn't really time to do anything at that point. But I'm still going forward. I mean, the kids understand, and so I think they're part of this discussion too.
And you understand that if the board doesn't like the balcony, what, what would you propose?
Uh, I would, in that case, I would come back with a proposal that would maybe build out the second floor a little bit deeper over the, over the proposed first floor to get the coverage requirements to enlarge the third floor a little bit more out the back. So again, we could try something, maybe with windows that could be opened up outside, so that would be.
And as you're understanding, when we're talking about coverage, I'm going to go to Mr. Wishbone's comment. We're really talking about coverage when it comes to the building code, because this balcony is already counted for in the third story, half-story.
The calculation.
Calculations.
Do you have another comment or two about the other things?
It's your application, you're on.
Um, we talked about groundwater coverage. I know it's not considered an application a favorable thing, but at, at some extra expense, when we did the garage apartment, we made a significant part of the driveway open pavers so there would be better groundwater absorption or drainage water. So I know it doesn't count in any of the calculations because you don't get credit for, for open pavers, but I just wanted to point out that I am sympathetic to that issue and have made, taken actions in that, in that regard, even, even though it costs me a little more money. And as far as the bathroom is, no, you cannot stand up in that. Because you only have about that much. My wife couldn't either. She was barely five feet. And you can't, you have to sit on the floor to be not standing. It's actually better for.
And you want to add?
That should be the right one.
I mean, we've, we've been there for a long time. We loved the house and we kind of wanted to keep this thing looking field because we think it's such a, you know, we tried to take into care of it, but this is kind of an act of this, or. Thank you, Russell. Any questions?
Have you done any calculations on the angle? Because it doesn't appear that the angle's going to be correct for you to look down Fifth Avenue and see the ocean.
Well, well, for one thing, you know, balcony, an open kind of view would give us a chance to kind of swing our, I mean, it's not like the window has to be aimed right down Fifth Avenue, right? It can look out at an angle from the balcony.
From this angle, it appears to me, and again, I'm not an engineer, but you'd be looking at the thirty-five-foot houses on, on Fifth Avenue and not looking down Fifth Avenue. I'm puzzled how you can see the ocean.
Well, is it okay if I?
Yeah, yeah, sure.
I mean, what I'm trying to do is roughly get a line of sight. No, it's, it's okay. I'll just kind of do it.
Careful, careful.
Okay, I'm trying to get a line of sight down Fifth Avenue, right? And so that comes back and that hits my lot somewhere back here.
It looks like if you did the balcony in the front, then you would have a better shot.
The balcony in the front, I look here.
No, you have, you have a setback.
A little bit of a setback, so I'm looking here. But I can look out the, the second floor windows and the third floor windows and not see the ocean, as it is. And the third floor dormer is already back behind where the front porch would be.
This isn't six hundred block, is it?
Yes, six fifteen foot avenue. I mean, have I engineered it to get a direct line of sight? No, but it, it just, it looks, it looks to me like it, it lines up.
If you were to put, excuse me, if you were to play a drone at that elevation and then just turn and be able to look at, have a drone or video, you probably would see that you're going to be seeing trees inside your houses and apartment buildings and possibly not even be able to see the ocean in that view. I'm on the three hundred block and it's, it's difficult. The glimpses of ocean are very minimal in the, in the second half-story. So I, I'm just, I, I, I understand your desire, but I mean, before you look at that effort and everything, I don't know if you actually could even accomplish it.
Well, I would still get the breeze even if I don't get quite the direct line of sight. I mean, there, there is a fair amount of play here, right? But I would not flung the drone around and.
That's it. Yes, it's difficult to get a see that.
But it's clearly not from the front of the house.
But regardless of that, there's no mention of the, with the variance for the balcony on the, on the document, on the, uh.
Oh, yeah.
The, the, there's no mention of the variance in this document.
Yeah, I believe there's an oversight, I guess.
There's not much of a variance.
No, so the side yard was adjusted. So what we did have is on the, you were right, our letter, the balcony was an oversight for all our variants and designs that existed on before we started, from the four point eight nines, what they're calling. We just wanted to have testimonies, excuse me, and they did testify that it's going to be five feet and not the four.
Yes, sir. Regardless of the view, that's nobody's guaranteed view. The, we've had, we've probably opened years of rear balconies and have shot ninety-nine point nine percent down. It's for reasons of privacy reasons, neighbors' privacy issues, overlooking, you know, people's backyard. Yeah, you can, you can look out when I go look at their backyard. But having an open porch or open balcony, it just seems to exacerbate the issue. I would not be, I would like to set it on, the balcony on, and just move on there. Because it shouldn't really, because it's just going to open up a can of worms in the future, of more balconies not in the right place. And we just, we've fought this so many times. And to the ordinance, the ordinance changed dramatically to prohibit that because of the discussions. I, my personal opinion is just can't be. Just get rid of the balcony.
Just to echo the vice chairman's comments, there are no balconies allowed on garage apartments for that same reason. It was done intentionally by the council and the planning board at the time. And also with the adjustments to section four fifty of the ordinance, it was a lot of time put on the balconies to allow them just in one location when you're up the high and it is a privacy issue, so we have to think about the, the other residents.
This is, the, the application is a, in our opinion, a unique property when it comes to the location and the angle of the street, the, the direction of Fifth Avenue as it heads east, where, how this property sits within block fifty-seven. So, so, you know, trust me, we've had these conversations with our client. We do think we, we had to come in here for variance anyway. We did think that this is one of those unique situations that you take advantage of what your master plan says about, about having the, you know, the ocean views and the, building the ocean breezes and those things. So, you know, we thought that this is an appropriate property for that. I understand what you're saying. I understand what the ordinance says. And again, we've had those conversations with our client.
The ordinance does reflect air and light also, which are things that we are considering in the balance of your application. So, you know, again, we're, we're looking at a balancing act here. And I don't believe the property is uniquely suited for this because it is six blocks from the ocean. If you're in the ocean block and you have a lot of this big, then I, I would have it to be different. I don't believe this, this lot is specifically suited for this request. So I, I mirror the words of my.
Are you going to, one minute?
I, I think we're going to have to have a quick discussion with our client before, before I do that and probably Mr. Sirozov as well.
Right, because I don't like bifurcated fights.
No, 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 I don't want to go down that road again.
For this application, I noticed that particularly.
Well, we have, we have members of the public, so maybe we should, if you're done with this witness, maybe we should hear if any of you have questions.
Sure. At this point in time.
Are you done with this?
I, I'm finished with.
Oh, okay. Okay, at this point in time, we'd like to open, Mr. Kirk, to the owner, up to any questions from the public. Not comments, just questions.
Any questions, gentlemen?
Seeing none, I close the public portion and turn it back to you.
Can I just have a few minutes to talk to my client?
Sure. Should we take, should we take a recess? I'm gonna make a recess.
Whatever.
Yeah, I'd like to make the motion. We take a five-minute recess.
That's fine.
Is that all in favor?
Thanks so much.
Just keep in mind that the YouTube is still running. We can't stop and start the live stream.
We're still on TV.
However, you want to do, I have the question. Let's get it. Well, we can't say that. Anyway, I appreciate them. So that would be, you're done, right?
We can reconvene. Yes, we're ready.
Everyone back?
I'm just gonna take a quick roll call. Sheriff Owen.
Here.
Mr. Mayor.
Here.
Mr. Wishbo.
Here.
Ms. Momoney.
Here.
Mr. Mainer.
Here.
Councilman Wiki.
Here.
Ms. Saracene.
Here.
Ms. Lady.
Here.
And Mr. Frederick.
Here.
Thank you.
So, Mr. Chairman, board members, I can represent us, talk to the client. He's heard comments from some of the board members and he has agreed to remove the balcony. Other than that, the application remains.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Well, you want to open a public comment?
Yes, I would. It's kind of weird. I'd like to open it up to public comments, comments only from any members of the public. Seeing none, I'll close the public comment and I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you. Just a very brief summary. So with the removal of the balcony, we're asking for two variances. One variance is to match the existing hip roof at the existing height, which as the testimony provided was just a very small area, eighteen inches by eighteen inches more, or I guess it's probably eighteen by thirty-six when you talk about the roofline being twelve over twelve. And in addition to that, that enables you to provide a matching dormer to the rear of the house that's behind the existing dormers in the front. The roofline doesn't change anything in the front from the view of the front. It's strictly going back, which from a historical perspective of a, of a construction like this, you'd want to match that. That's what you'd want to do from a historical perspective. The second issue that we're asking for the variance for is we have an existing setback condition in that existing one-story rear. And as a result of that, we're asking to be able to continue on the second floor that same line up to the point where the existing first-story ends, where anything to the rear of that is going to match your five-foot setback. So those are the two variances that we're asking for this application. And I think the testimony, as far as the aesthetics and those things, these can be justified as both the C-one as well as the C-two variances.
The C-one, what's the hardship?
The hardship is you have an existing structure condition. So we're matching roofline that's existing. We're matching the existing setback.
C-two would be the characteristic of the building.
In those, you know, neighborhood, those characteristics.
Do I have a motion to the board?
I'll move it.
Move what?
Approve it. Approve it. As a resolution.
And if you could state your reasoning for the...
Before we go to the district, you what?
Yeah, I'd like to see.
There's a lot back to forth. Just make sure we got it.
Yeah. So we're, we're granting a height variance for thirty-six point two-five feet, which is the existing condition on the main structure. We're also granting a second variance for the westerly side setback at two, is it two point nine feet?
It is two point oh nine.
Two point oh nine feet for that portion where the second floor is gonna be added. That's twelve feet, six and a half inches where that second floor will be an increase into the side setback. And then the balance of the structure will meet the requirements.
And additionally, the balcony has been removed?
The balcony has been removed and the stormwater management plan will be approved by Mr. Bakian's office at time of...
At time of resolution combined before.
Do I have a second? Ms. Momoney.
I'm gonna vote yes. I think it's a hardship with the, with the house being height that is. I think aesthetically, it would be good to have everything now.
Ms. Saracene.
I vote yes. I think that the balcony was gratuitous, but a good try. And I wish to walk under the fifth block of Fifth Avenue, six-hour block, and still looking just amazing. There's not a lot of great presence after this meeting here.
Mr. Wishbo.
Vote yes. I think the client will agree.
Mr. Mainer.
Yes, I vote yes. Let me favor the balcony.
Councilman Wiki.
Yes, I think it would be better if you fly and you get straight with and architecturally pleasing versus being chopped off.
Ms. Lady.
I vote yes as well. I think it'll be aesthetically pleasing and it'll match the roofline and the overall formation.
Mr. Frederick.
Yes.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, and basically everything except for, thank you.
And Sheriff Owen.
Yes, I vote yes. I believe it meets the purposes of zoning. I promote the visual environment created while protecting specific design and arrangement. I am very impressed with the submissions. It made it very clear. It is C-one and C-two alike. And your presentation helped us understand the impact of this agreement. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Remember, all of your submissions have to come through me for compliance. For compliance. Technically, too. And once they're ready, then I'll, I'll need additional, I'll need additional to, so I can say, I'm ready.
We can move down to just whole business. I'd just like to go over our, our plans for November with Jake in terms of the planning we talked about last time you were here.
Sure, yes.
And we were waiting for the end of the October month.
Right.
To see where the state goes. And I just want to clarify that you'll be able to have something for us.
So they, they didn't reach out to us to set up that technical review meeting? But when I did speak to Christine, she said that in her crystal ball, she declared that they will get back to us by the end of the year. So within probably the next couple of months, she said probably well before December, they'll get back to us with the date to set up that.
Well, the problem I have with it is that, you know, we really planned and I think we all agree upon in terms of our conversations here as a board that we would like to put this to bed by the end of the year. So we turn it over to council January first. We're allegedly told that they have until March thirtieth to submit that. We want to give them enough time.
Yep.
So I feel like we keep getting pushed back and we're here to do our work.
For sure. And I reiterated that to Christine and she assured me that, that timeline of getting that in well before the new year is completely possible, so.
Yeah, but that only leaves us two more meetings for, you know, for us to, you know, review it and really make sure we're meticulous in what we're saying to the council.
No, I understand your concern. We're the same way. It's sort of a waiting game right now at this point. And that, that's what Christine has relayed to me since our last meeting.
So you don't feel we could put it on the agenda for the November meeting?
I, I would be able to get back to you if I could speak to Christine, hopefully, yeah. Probably not by tomorrow, but I'm sure I could get back to you by Monday or Tuesday, reach out to her and she could give me an idea of getting it on the agenda.
Yeah, that was our goal, was that November meeting, because we wanted to...
Yeah, yeah, let me, yeah, let me run it by her and see what she says. I'll shoot her a text tomorrow and see if I can...
Board secretary will put it on the agenda.
Yeah.
And we're specifically talking about the ordinances?
Yes, the, the ordinance for the fair share housing plan.
So let me jump in here. So Jake, call, you take one of my cards and call...
I, I got you.
Okay. So, so I want to, I also want to get prepared, so to speak. And the ordinances are mostly done, I think. And we had a, a packet that was sent to us in our work during the pre-summer, before the summer, that had the ordinances as they are drafted. So we can certainly take a look at those. We need, we need...
Are those drafts included with the housing plan?
Well, those drafts, they were with the housing plan, that's correct. But I don't know that it's all the ordinances.
Okay.
And I don't, you know, I would consult with our affordable housing attorney, who's Ron, and he has a backup...
Mr. Cuchero, yes.
Right, Mr. Cuchero from my office. And he has a backup, because he's currently ill, so we have a backup of an affordable housing attorney who worked with us in Bradley Beach during the May-June time period. So I know she dealt with the mayor and the council on their end of the affordable housing. So I think that we should have a, a couple of discussions that you can then convey with Christine.
Sure, yeah.
And then he'll contact you and the board secretary and let's see if we... Even if we can get the ordinances that are already ready, already written, we could probably do those in November, December. But again, you run the risk of the technical review meeting having stuff that we didn't do in our, in our discussions, you know? You're going to make a recommendation to the council that these ordinances fit the master plan, fit the affordable housing, et cetera. You may change things. And then the technical review committee might come in after that and say, well, we don't think that this is appropriate here or we don't, that's the problem.
Well, I mean, there's a couple issues because, you know, there, there has been a lot of talk about the, the sale of the church. The council has indicated that they would like to take some initial proceeds and include it in the plan. So again, I'd rather not have a technical review unless we have a solid document to submit. I think that will carry weight with, you know, the reviewers. And I have said publicly, I've said here that, you know, I believe that should happen. Whatever the number is would be up to the council.
Yeah.
But I think it would be advantageous for us as a borough to show that good faith because the money has not been put into the affordable housing trucks over the last, the last terms of the administrations. So it leaves us in a problematic situation not having the funds to really do rehabilitations, which could be necessary beneficial for our plan.
Yeah.
So...
And of course, our work, then the council still needs two meetings to pass these.
Well, yeah, and that goes quickly, you know, with, with the reorigin refers.
Yeah.
Everything else, it does go quickly. So I, I mean, I think we all agree as a, as a group that we really would like to have it done by January first. So if, if we could still focus on that November date, again, we'll have some time to do the, the agenda. I don't want to put it on the agenda and then not get it done for the public unless, but I, I think we really need to have a conversation, you know, amongst ourselves and the public.
Christine, I'll, I'll reach out to you after I hear from Christine if we can get it on there. Sound good?
That's great.
Yeah, and I, I will, I will want to review what we have with the affordable housing company as well.
Yeah, because I would like to know technically what it is we're listing as well.
Yeah, yeah. They, they can't be just the package ordinances. You need to identify them.
Right, individually or, or we're gonna have to do that. Does this require any sort of special notice?
I think it does. Uh, I think it does. Um, well, it's, it's a...
Is it more of a workshop?
It's a recommendation that in ordinance, uh, comply, uh, is consistent with the master plan. That's basically what we're doing. So I don't think there was a special notice for that.
Well, normally we do consistency review after they have their first reading.
Yeah, between...
This is more of a workshop, I mean, is it not?
Yeah, it's a workshop there, yes.
So, I mean, that, that's, I mean, as far as public participation, I mean, it, it's listed on the agenda and the meeting was notice.
Yeah.
Is there a separate notice for this?
I don't think there is any second one, a separate notice. There, he did, eventually they're just treated as normal ordinances, even though they have to do with the affordable housing.
Right, right.
So any special notice, if there is any, is gonna be at the council. So I, I agree that we should talk about it and then they, Mr. Chair, you'll have, have to make the call, put it on the agenda.
Okay. So, yeah, ten days before we'll make that decision, but...
I think that one other thing I want to bring up to the board, to you and to, um, and that is, God bless you, you may be aware that there is now a new law about using publication through the website of your municipality rather than in official newspapers. And the effective date of that is going to be in March. But the questions are coming up as to whether or not we still have to designate official, uh, newspapers. We still have to, the, the, the idea of the new statute is get away from the newspapers and do it through publication on your website. And so we should be preparing for that, for our reorg meeting here. And of course, I'm sure your council, your town council and your, I'm sorry, your borough attorney is gonna figure out what you've got, what the council needs to do.
We would, we would then pick a specific website and announce that that's where it's gonna take place.
Well, I think for MLUL purposes, the council, the, the borough's website is the only choice, the borough website.
And how do we handle that for applicants? Would they...
They, 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 well, that's a good question. I don't know.
So you have to, you have, the idea would be is that all the notices go through the borough's website and all of those websites are now going to be available in DCA. So you, if you're a resident, anybody, if you go to one website, click on, just like you know, the tax about the borough of Bradley Beach, you have those notices.
Ah.
So, so it would be like tonight, if Mr. Beakman's notice about us calling out the variances would be out at the house?
Yes, yeah, so it'd have to go through the municipalities throughout the state, municipality website, and that's something. So you'd have one area, and again...
And then we would just hold it on?
Correct.
I, I, I think it's a little bit half-baked right now, but that's interesting. I mean, I, I, I like that the DCA is going to have one website, but that is going to definitely put a burden on board attorneys, board secretaries to make sure that the applicants are doing right. Frankly, I think the MLUL has to be amended because it talks about how they have to do notice, how they have to file affidavits of notice, how long it has to be, blah, blah, blah. And, you know, there, there is no amendment of the MLUL while this statute is coming. It's very similar to another statute that was done without considering MLUL. And that's the, the outdoor, that's the outdoor, uh, restaurant stuff that was pulled.
Experience that.
And, and no changes were made to the MLUL. So it basically left the borough and, and any other municipality, you know, flapping in the wind.
Without full rule.
Yeah, yeah, it, 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 it ameliorated full rule, in my opinion.
True.
You know? So we, and I do not have my act together yet on this. I have to prepare for it.
We'll, we'll...
And I just wanna put it on everyone's radar that we should be talking about it because it's a big change. We used to rely upon an official newspaper and that's all we had to look at, so.
Yep.
You know, there are less and less official newspapers, actually.
They're going out, yeah.
Yeah, they're all, they're all...
Um, does any other board members have any questions or comments for whole business?
Okay.
Good, um, that being said, I will make a motion to close the meeting.
All favor?
Aye.